Mrs. Poser?
Present.
Mr. Lager. Mr. Lucaffio?
Here.
Mr. Fane?
Here.
Mr. Muzak?
Here.
Mr. Obardo?
Here.
Dr. Zorg? Mr. Palmer? Mr. Howard?
Here. At this time, I'd like to open the floor up to hearing members for part one. This is where anyone in the audience can scan the podium and ask their name and address and speak of anything that's on the agenda this evening. Seeing no one, I move for the motion for resolution number 228 approval minutes.
Second.
Do we have a motion on the floor in second? Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Solicitor's report. Can I have a report, Mr. President? Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Solicitor's report, Mrs. Squatter?
Our report is on the update of this cyber school legislation that actually we passed a resolution. Unfortunately, there are four bills being presented regarding cyber schools, none of which deal with money of cyber schools. They deal with some ancillary things, ethical leadership, some other items. So we'll keep you updated. The word now is that maybe something will be presented in the fall. But just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Quatter. Education planning, Mr. Fane?
Yes, thank you. We'll be getting your report without him for the week. Hi. Happy May. So it's field trip season as May always is. I haven't been to school much this month, neither has anyone else. Sixth grade kids this month also, so a lot of seniors are there, missing calculus tests, which I'm kind of a little jealous about, but that happened. And fun days at LES, Mountain View, and the other... That... I did it for elementary school. We have days like Career Day, art sessions at the Luchel Art Center, and storage sessions at Out of the World Library. And Olympic Day and other spirit programs are starting since the beginning of the year. It's all the summer, so thanks.
Now, we kind of said, my, this is my last time of this polling to make it. So in front of you, I gave everyone an invite to my graduation party, a twenty. Plus, one important thing, the junior high will have a core cast concert Wednesday, May fifteenth. Tomorrow, yeah. And student management person is a band concert. And for senior high, Mr. Beagle was made a team advisor role for the major space in library, meaning that she's having a student be in charge of setting up the three printers and the laser cutters and such, so that kind of gives that person leadership role and learn how to use that technology. I mean, great way to go about that thing. And the new most important, May twenty-fourth is the last day for seniors. She closed with a new quote.
I think you have to go one more day up.
Alright, thank you very much.
Because Adam just alluded, we are saying goodbye to our two student reps, so have a little pocket of appreciation for them. They've done a wonderful, wonderful job for us, and we certainly appreciate their service. Thank you for everything. Wonderful job. Good luck with everything. Where are you going? Heathfield?
Saint Hill University. It's all over here.
What are you pretty good at?
Nurse stay. Nurse stay at Saint Hill.
University of Fort Jackson.
Wow. Thank you, Dad. We're gonna have a round of applause. I'd like to see if you can come out faster, Johnson. Okay, roll the report, Mr. Arndt. Do you want to introduce the new faculty?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Jason Sofia.
Hi.
You guys want to say something?
I'm Sophia Hope, and I'm a junior here, and obviously, next year, obviously.
I'm Jay Sobardo. Dan Watson's my uncle.
I told him we got lunch, and make sure he doesn't throw it.
Welcome to both of you. We'll hold forward to having your call. Now, welcome to court, Mr. Frank.
Current enrollment reports attached, aside the kindergarten at this point, is at two hundred and five total students, fifty-nine at Berkeley, eighty at LES, and sixty-six at Mountain View, and that's the current number as of this afternoon. Mrs. Patrick Williams, do you mean? At this point, I would be surprised if we get to two-twenty, but I think it's not totally out of question. But what we'll get in August is it'll be a plus minus, you know, somewhere over mid, somewhere over wild, if they move back and forth, so.
No more to come. Thank you. Okay, I will list for adoption, resolution number two-twenty-nine to approve the E-CAD Academy Amendment, the mother state, including GLSC and GLEA for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. So.
Wait a second.
One second.
We have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
I approve adoption, resolution number two-thirty, to approve the supplemental educational grants in the GLSC area.
We're a second to that.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
I have a bundle of resolutions, number two-thirty-one and two-thirty-two, they're about agreements. Number two-thirty-one, approves Western Maryland Intermeading Student Services in our agency agreement for the nineteen twenty school year, and two-thirty-two, to approve the Adelphi Education Services Partial ESY-Summer Program Literate Agreement. Second.
We have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
I have a bundle of resolutions, number two-thirty-three, two-thirty-four, two-thirty, we're making to approve the Adelphi Village Incorporated Leadership Agreement, and two-thirty, we're making to approve the University School two thousand eighteen nineteen summer school program. Second.
Motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
And then I will approve adoption, resolutions number two-thirty-five and two-thirty-six. First, we're making to approve the Western Pennsylvania School for the Adelphi two thousand eighteen nineteen summer extended school year program, and two-thirty-six, they need to approve the Arcadia Home Care and Staffing Literate Agreement for the LPN services for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year. Second.
We have a motion in the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
I approve adoption, resolution number two-thirty-seven, to approve the Dynamic Management Group Incorporated Acadian's Data Management, formerly known as the University of Oregon, the Dibbles Data System UC agreement. Second. You want to tell us about that one?
Sure. We've used for a number of years Dibbles, which is a predictor of reading fluency in our elementary students. The company was bought out and separated into two, and Acadians is the new version of Dibbles, something we've used for thirteen years plus.
Do the kids have to be able to say at Acadians?
If they can say it, they pass.
We have a motion on the floor in second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
And lastly, I approve adoption, resolution number two-thirty-eight, to approve tuition students for next year as listed.
We have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
The next typical commissary meeting will be on Tuesday, June the eighteenth at five thirty, the end of the year.
Thank you. Finance, please give a presentation.
You know, it's my fault. I forgot to put the freezing patients out of the side, and so when again those out, anybody who's interested, I mean, you can all, you know. Anybody else like a pocket? For anybody who thinks they might want one? Yeah, if you want to put them up. Okay, I know as everybody's aware, we're due this every year to May, and required by law to adopt the proposed final budget prior May thirty-first, since this is our meeting the month of May, and we need to act on this tonight. Two thousand nineteen twenty, we're going to the expenditure part, so I'll start with the expenditure side. We're looking at a total expenditure budget of fifty-seven million, one hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. Sorry, can I? I was about to... Sorry, Jess, I might have...
No, no, no.
Yep, there we go. There we go. Okay, which is an increase of a little over a million dollars, and the percentage increase is about one point eight, one point eight-five percent. Okay, so what I want to do is highlight the major areas of changes, okay, the major increases and major decreases. Wages are going up by four hundred and eleven thousand, almost four hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which is a one point seven-two percent increase. Health care's going up by almost thirty-two thousand, which is a point seven percent increase. Peasars retirement is going up three hundred and four thousand, or a four point three-seven percent increase. Technology, ninety-five thousand, or nine percent. Curriculum, ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, or thirty-two point six-nine percent. Transportation, almost sixty thousand dollars, or one point nine percent. And business operations, we're seeing a decrease of seventy-one thousand, or around a point eight-seven percent decrease. So let me dive into that a little bit more and explain what is going on in each of these areas. Wages. As I mentioned, projected increase by Bob Ford is twelve thousand dollars. First, let me give you a little history. Prior to two thousand eleven, twelve, the average annual wage increase for contracted employees increased by a little over three percent. Since that time, since two thousand eleven, twelve, the average annual wage increase for contracted employees has increased by about one point two percent, which is a significant change. And the reason for that change is we've offered several early retirement centers, and we've also been able to take advantage of certain staffing changes, is what I mean by that. As individuals have retired or resigned, we've been able to reallocate staff throughout the district and eliminate positions, which has been very, very beneficial in controlling our costs. This year, we have eleven retirements, one resignation, all of those individuals are going to be replaced, okay? And we're actually increasing two new positions. We had to add one elementary artistic sport teacher and a personal care assistant. We are anticipating with these staffing changes will result in a wage reduction of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And just to explain why, when you have an individual that leaves at the top of the scale, making, you know, close to ninety thousand dollars, when you replace him with a storage teacher making around forty-five thousand dollars, obviously, there's a significant savings. What we try to do is if we can identify areas where we don't need to replace the staff, you know, we're staying at close to ninety thousand dollars just in salaries. But with all of these changes, the retirements and resignations, we're seeing a reduction. So historically, you'll see, and normally what you'll see is wages go up anywhere from seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars. So the fact that it's only going up four hundred thousand dollars this year, one point seven-two percent, you know, we're definitely benefiting from that. Healthcare. Okay, projected increase in healthcare is around thirty-two thousand dollars, or point seven percent. There is a medical freeze this year on our premiums, so there, we propose a medical freeze within the consortium participate. In addition, we're doing a realignment, and basically what that means is there's a base plan within the consortium, and there's plans that kind of float around it. Every now and again, they look at it, and they say, are the plans that are either richer than the base plan or less rich than the base plan, are they priced properly? And then they realign it. What we ended up seeing, because of the plans that we offer here, the realignment actually reduced our premiums, which is a good thing. So when we thought it was going to be flat, we're actually seeing a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar decrease overall in premiums. As I was insinuating there, we participate in the Western Oregon County Public School Healthcare Consortium, so it's a large group of schools throughout Western Oregon that come together and operate their own consortium. We're self-funded, which means that there's a consortium board that sets these premiums. Now, we work with a third-party administrator called HUB that gives us advice, and they help us track them all the trends and the claims and make recommendations to us on, you know, how to, you know, incentivize healthy living lifestyles and those things with our membership. But ultimately, the board is made up of one member of every sending school district, and we set our premiums based on the feedback that we receive. The consortium has been successful in controlling the premium increases. I'll tell you, the market trend is about a ten percent increase per year. What we've done within the consortium, our ten-year average is two point five percent increase, and our five-year average is one percent. So we, this has been a very successful partnership, and we're very fortunate to be able to participate in this program, because, you know, your healthcare costs normally go up anywhere from a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars a year. And if you remember, last year, we saw a decrease in premiums of two point four percent. So the fact that we were able to go a decrease last year, propose a zero percent raise in premiums for two thousand nineteen twenty shows that we're doing very well, and I think a lot of initiatives consortium puts in place for our members is reflected in these low numbers. So I'm showing an increase overall for healthcare of thirty-two thousand dollars, yet we're seeing a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar increase in overall premium cost. So what makes up that difference is other post-employment benefits. This year, we had thirteen retirees enrolled in our other post-employment benefits. Next year, because we have eleven more retirees, we're going to have twenty-four retirees enrolled. That's going to come to an additional hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar cost. So yes, in my previous slide, I showed we were saving over four hundred and some thousand in wages, but some of that will be offset because we'll be taking on additional healthcare contributions. Okay, Peasars retirement, I've been speaking about this, it seems like for years and years and years, I don't have as many slides, but it's just as important today as it was in the prior years. Our projected increase is about three hundred and forty-four thousand. The employer contribution rate for two thousand nineteen twenty is projected to increase of thirty-four point two-nine percent. This is an increase from the current employer contribution rate of thirty-three point four-three percent. So just keep in mind, for every one dollar paid in wages, we are redirecting an additional thirty-four cents towards Peasars retirement, etc., okay? So that is very, very, very significant. Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the budget of Peasars retirement was seven, almost seven point nine million, or fourteen percent of our operating costs. In two thousand nineteen, twenty, they're projected to be a little over eight point two million, which is fourteen and a half percent of our operating cost. This is to give you a little bit more of an idea. In two thousand nine, ten, our actual Peasars retirement is a little over one million dollars, which is two percent of our operating costs. Two thousand eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, our actual Peasars retirement, when I say actual, it's meaning these are audited numbers, is almost seven and a half million. So that is extremely, extremely impactful, went from two percent to thirteen percent, which is almost a six point five million dollar increase for six hundred and thirty-four percent in eight years. So, you know, we're doing a very good job of controlling all other costs that we can, but this one, and it's like, I don't have a slide on this, but remember, Peasars is state law, it's not local decision, you can't decide to not participate, you can't decide to set these rates. These rates are set by the state government, and again, it is by law, legally required to follow that. So just to give you a little bit more history, two thousand five, six, the employer rate was four point six-nine percent, and that employer cost was a little over five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. In eighteen, nineteen, as I mentioned, it's thirty-three point four-three percent, the net employer cost is almost four million dollars. Nineteen, twenty, going to thirty-four point two-nine, the net employer cost is a little over four point one. And what the most, today information provides, the two thousand five, six is being the highest rate, it's projected to go to thirty-seven point three-nine percent, which is a net employer cost of five point three million dollars. So again, oh-five, oh-six, we're going to go from a little over a half million to over five million dollars in twenty-five, twenty-six. So how does this impact the district's village, which I think that most people wonder? The ten-year average village increases around one point two-three mils per year. Of this amount, one mil per year has gone to Peasars, okay? Which means the balance, the point two-three mils has gone in on Peasars increases for things such as salary and benefits, transportation, land operations, special education, cyber charter costs, as well as supplies and exports included. So the vast majority, obviously, is being directed to Peasars retirement costs. This grid here is just to show you, and I know it's hard to see, the black bars are expenditures which include the cost of Peasars retirement, the orange bars are expenditure, all other expenditures, not include Peasars retirement. So again, I view this as what we can control, and we can control those orange bars, and I think it shows that this school board, this school district has done a pretty decent job of controlling those costs. Okay, technology was one of the other areas, going up by ninety-five thousand, or nine percent. Majority of this were software costs. There is an increase of sixty-two thousand as a result of rising costs for existing software needs, as well as because of new curriculum software needs. And I think most of you are familiar with software and how that works. Those costs, they get you. Once they get you, you start utilizing them, those costs tend to go up on an annual basis. And as far as our curriculum goes, more and more technology is being incorporated into that curriculum, which means more and more software is being needed. In addition to that, our fiber optic costs are increasing, we have a need to, it decreased by fifteen thousand because we had a need to increase our demand from one gate to ten gate as a result of additional network traffic, which is caused by additional cameras, phone system upgrades, and more computers. So is that the time we need to make that adjustment? It is that time for us to make that adjustment. So because of the fiber optic costs, we have technology infrastructure costs that are going up as well. They increased by thirty-four thousand dollars, and again, it's the infrastructure upgrades to support the one gate to ten gate adjustment. We plan to use, so if you look at the talk, it says ninety-five thousand, that is a truly increase to our budget, but we also have some additional capital purchases that are not reoccurring, one-time long recurring capital purchases for technology. We're recommending to use nine thousand dollars of our unassigned fund amounts to make those purchases. So ultimately, it looks like it's going up by about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, but budgetarily, we're only going to be leaving the pack of about ninety-five thousand. The other ninety, we're going to pay from the reserve account. Curriculum, projected increase by almost ninety-three thousand, it's for new science curriculum purchases, basically new science textbooks, okay? New science textbooks, very expensive cost, much more expensive than the programs we upgraded in the prior years. So we're looking at budgeting more for ninety-two thousand, almost ninety-three thousand dollars, but we actually need about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars worth. We're proposing because this is sort of out of the ordinary, it's higher than what we needed in the past and what we need in future years. We're recommending using three thousand unassigned fund amounts. And for those of you who haven't heard this statement before, we only recommend using fund amounts for those one-time long recurring costs. If you use it for recurring, those costs are there for next year, but those funds are not available next year. So you put yourself in a hole if you use it for recurring costs. So I've identified two areas of long recurring costs where I'm recommending using fund amounts. Transportation, it's increasing by about sixty thousand, almost two percent. The two thousand nineteen, twenty contract increase is a three percent increase, more in the middle, or at the very end of seven-year contract, year seven, seven. I just wanted to review, year one was a decrease, and I don't know if you can tell everybody, it's a six point one, seven percent decrease is what we were able to negotiate. Year two is a late rate freeze. Year three and year four were three percent increases. Year five was a rate freeze. Year six and year seven, the three percent increases. So again, this contract expires, so we're currently seeking proposals, we're going through the same process, we're currently out seeking, like I said, the requested proposals from various carriers. So why isn't three percent is probably what we're thinking? It's reduced by one percent because we've been able successfully to reduce the number of vans and bus costs that we have by being able to consolidate routes, as well as having students who require specialized van transportations that have graduated and moved along. In addition to this, you know, I should highlight, you know, the benefit of currently dealing with vans does an excellent job of sharing those costs and consolidating our routes and working with other districts, so we're sharing van bus costs with others. So we're very fortunate to have that group to be able to work with. Business operations, a decrease of seventy-one thousand. We're recommending capital project costs, a decrease of about a hundred and forty-eight thousand makes up the majority of that. EDW CTC costs, the tuition costs there have increased by forty-six thousand dollars. We've shared that previously with the board, just a reminder, it's based on the average data of the membership. Our, our school district is sending more students to the CTC, an increase by about one point oh-one percent, which makes up the majority of the cost increase. Also, cyber charter regular aid tuition increase of about nineteen thousand dollars. Projected cyber charter regular aid annual tuition rate increased by a hundred and nine dollars per year. Okay, so summary of projected revenue changes, load was going up by around two hundred thousand dollars, state over four hundred thousand dollars, the majority of that money, those fees, which was every versus fifty percent of our increase cost. Federal sixty-two thousand, any other, zero. So we're looking at a total change of about right around seven hundred thousand dollars in additional income. So let's look at the local piece. Real estate tax collections are going up by two hundred and nine thousand dollars. That's the value of the village increase, okay? The reason it's going up is based on the two thousand eighteen Western Oregon County Assessment Property Value Report, clearly, church school district experience an increase of two point three million dollars growth in its assessed value. So we're very fortunate to live in the school district and seeing its assessed value continue to climb. Not all school districts are seeing that, so we are very fortunate. The ten-year average from, you know, the change in assessed values are a whole point seven, so we're slightly higher than the ten-year average, so two thousand eighteen was better than one year. Earned income taxes, we're recommending an increase of fifty thousand dollars. Since Act Thirty-Two collections have been in place, requiring accounting by tax collect and we've increased our earned income tax to three point one to three point eight million dollars. So it's certainly worked, and we are certainly benefiting from it. The two-year average is three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Currently, we have three point seven million dollars budgeted, I'm recommending we bump it up to three million, seven fifty. If we continue to get three point eight, we'll bump that up to a little bit more in future years. Command response, we're seeing a decrease of thirty-five thousand, who participate in the Pennsylvania, Jersey, Maryland, Purdue, BAM program. Fletch weights year to year, based on electricity capacity value, basically supply and demand. In two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, present a budget of capacity, which is driving the program pricing down, so we're getting less money. Refund expenditures, that's a good and miss one, kind of, kind of fluctuate year to year. We're back recommended decreasing based on trend. The two-year average is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, we have two hundred and eight thousand budget this year, so we're going to recommend two fifty to reduce that about thirty thousand. State allocation, it's based on the governor's February state budget proposal. Basic ed is projected to increase by a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Special ed is projected to increase by forty-one. We are once again assuming plan borrowing verse for sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen borrowings for debt service. Projected rental sinking fund subsidies increased by about a hundred and three thousand. Assume increase funding for Peasars because again, the fifty percent. So by law, the state is required to match the fifty percent of the increased cost due to Peasars retiring. Projected increase is about a hundred and seventeen thousand. So what this chart is just showing, state funding is in the black bars, which includes the cost of Peasars. State and federal funding in the orange bar removes Peasars. So if you look at the orange bar, our funding from the state So if you look at the, the orange bar, our funding from the state, federal government without the cost of Peasars retirement is basically flat. And so we have to generate additional income from our areas. Excuse me, so the budgetary endowment, state funding, still, no, our state budget's going to be next year, so that'll change, you know, in the month of May and June, so there's always an unknown there. Federal funding, you know, Mr. Prempka shoots the emails in the middle of the school year saying the federal funding just, you know, dropped our, dropped the funding by X dollars. It, it happens throughout the year, so what they tell you to get it, you don't always get, they change it, um, based on available funds. Uh, Peasars retirement rate, while we know that it's going up, we don't know when it's going to stop going up, then you can start climbing. Uh, special education, you know, it all depends on who moves in and out of the district. Uh, you get one or two students, it could be very costly. Cyber school enrollment and tuition. I know there's a bill out there that changed the funding method for cyber schools, not sure how much support that will get, uh, but that is a very expensive, um, cost. Uh, future budgetary concerns, um, yeah, thank you. Uh, future budgetary concerns, Peasars employer rate increases that I mentioned before, we can, we anticipate those continuing to climb. Future capital projects, uh, Mr. Tormes attended our last Friday night's committee meeting, uh, he's in the process of developing a very, very thorough five-year rolling capital plan. You know, there are a lot of, uh, uh, projects that are on the, on the forefront here that will be coming, uh, down the pipe, and you just need to make sure we continue to budget, budget accordingly. I always say we have over a hundred and eighty million dollars in capital assets, we need to make sure we're ready to pay those. Um, state budget allocation, you know, we hope that they maintain a certain level of funding, but there's a lot of uncertainty there. Same with the federal, uh, Act One index, it only allows you to increase to the average of the statewide average weekly wage and employee cost index, which meant that we could increase taxes this year, I think to about two point three mils. Um, you know, if something were to happen to state, federal funding, or if we had, uh, you know, you know, significant spikes, one of our operating costs, uh, we're stopped, you know? It means we're going to have to start cutting programs, and nobody, nobody wants to be one. Old retirement incentives, as I've mentioned, we've offered several old retirement incentives recently. Uh, we're relatively young staff, so we can continue to offer them, but we're not sure how many people are going to be taking these advantage of. Special education is always an unknown. Transportation, obviously, we're out for proposals right now. We hope to be able to control those costs, but nothing to guarantee. So a recommendation, approve, approve a proposed final budget with an amount of fifty-seven, one hundred and five, eight hundred and seventy-four million dollars, and use one hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty unsigned fund amounts. Uh, record, this recommendation reflects a shortfall of three hundred and forty thousand, so we would call for a one mil increase. Next steps, to continue to evaluate the operating expenditures and to continue to review potential revenue funding sources. So that's kind of my piece on finances. Does anybody have any questions? Or anybody on the finance committee, uh, something I didn't highlight that you thought maybe I should have touched on? Okay. So we'll continue to monitor, if there are any changes for the January meeting, I will make sure to, um, share that with, uh, with, uh, with everybody. So Dr. Tepper and Mr. Prempka, who we've got to highlight a few things here, part of our review.
Um, every year, we try to review our accomplishments within, with our school district. You know, just like to say, these accomplishments would not be possible, obviously, without the support of the board and, uh, the budget that we do have, as well as the administrators at all the buildings and the teachers and support staff. We talked a lot about our new schedule at the junior high school, and we talked about the schedule and having the opportunity for common teacher planning time, the team of our students, so our teachers get to know a group of students better, to know their needs, and mob cap time, which is utilized for student remediation and/or activities that the students can participate in. Along with that, we have our professional learning communities. This was, uh, professional development, which I'll talk a little bit more in detail later, which, um, was provided on behalf of the foundation. We were fortunate to receive the monies to have administrators attend the conference, the national conference last summer down in Atlanta, and then we had a representative resolution treaty coming throughout the school year as well, to continue to work with our teams and our student, and our teachers, um, as well as our principals work with our teachers weekly during the common planning time. The new high school, obviously, the implementation of the new schedule, it, again, they have common teacher planning time, they've increased their class periods, and they have advisory time for students, again, to work to build those relationships, where students are assigned to teachers to talk about various things, career paths, career interests, the importance of soft skills when you're out in the career world, et cetera. And lunch and learn, which is an opportunity, again, for students to receive that tutoring and remediation that is needed, but also an opportunity for our students to have some unstructured time throughout the day and help them make that transition from high school to college. There were plenty of school visitations, we had spoken about these before as well. Mr. Mainz had taken a group of teachers out to High Tech High in California, and Vista High School, where they were able to, the group of teachers were able to really dig in and look at true project-based learning schools, along with project-based learning lessons. And with that information, continued to work with the staff to build the project-based learning lessons. We did receive the professional development from the secondary, from the junior high and the senior staff, senior high staff, everybody had been, um, attending for professional development in that area as well. Um, one visitation that we did this year, it was with, uh, Mrs. Cassel from the junior high, group of teachers, Mr. Mainz and herself, we had a visit down Montour High School, excuse me, Montour Middle School, where we were able to look at, get our artificial intelligence program. So that was quite exciting, and in fact, at our junior high school, we are going to be implementing some components from, um, that Montour School, uh, Montour Middle School have utilized in some of our current classes on artificial intelligence, and we're continuing to investigate that. So that's quite exciting. I also know that our teachers will be visiting borough here this month, actually, I think at the end of the month, um, uh, to see, uh, what they're doing as well. As far as career expos, Anthony Princeton is our mentorship coordinator, he's been with us now for two years, he's done an outstanding job. This year, we've increased our career expos to three full expos, which encompass the entire five career pathways. Um, so there was much growth there. We talked about three years ago with our career pathways, the opportunity for our students to do job shadowing, mentorships, and teachers in the workplace. Last year, the number of experiences for our students through job shadowing and mentorships was approximately one hundred and three opportunities for our students. That has increased actually to right under one hundred and fifty opportunities, where our students had the opportunity to either shadow or participate in a mentorship throughout our community. Courses were added this year to support the career pathways. Some of those courses, uh, introduction to hospitality, customer service, um, as well as a project leadway course inside a biomedical pathway. With the career pathway courses that have been implemented, dual enrollment opportunities have, have also been available to our students through the, um, internal hospitality, excuse me, through customer service, and this year, we're looking to have dual enrollment, um, with the internal hospitality. Um, we want to turn this over, Mike, about the district-wide communications.
Just last week, we were able to go fully functional with a district-wide unified communication system, and for some, you may think that's just a new phone system, but really what it is, is a, a way to better enhance communication across the school district on a unified platform, uh, which would also assist us in, in, in the event of an emergency. Uh, we did stop the lead training with the staff last week here, uh, during the service day, and Dr. Jenkins, who was the presenter, talked about the need to call nine-one-one in a situation. And do you know how to do that from your phones? And you've got to know what your location is, and it was great to be able to tell the staff that A, with the new unified communication system, you dialed directly nine-one-one, and B, you don't have to remember your location, because when that call goes in, your location is identified. So this is a big improvement to, uh, not only district-wide communication, but safety and security upgrade as well. Um, in addition, you know, the, the next bullet that's under the unified communication system is safe to say. Um, this year, uh, Act Forty-four, part of that legislation was that we had to implement an anonymous report tip, uh, or an anonymous, uh, reporting system for students, um, staff, community members, et cetera, to report tips to us, uh, students grade six through twelve, um, concerns that they, they have relative to student safety, uh, drug use, alcohol use, abuse, bullying, et cetera. Um, and we were able to successfully implement that plan according to the Act Forty-four legislation.
If I could jump back, we also had a course entitled expressive art mentor, which was implemented this current school year, and that involves students with special needs working with individual students who may want to pursue something in the field of, um, art, working with special needs students, or even, um, music, we have a music course with that as well. I talked again about the professional learning communities and the fact to see the growth with the professional learning communities and our teachers identifying essential skills that our, our students need to know and be able to accomplish, and then taking the data from those assessments from the essential skills and really drilling down, and it's great to hear at the secondary level, practicing flexible working with our students. So you have a team of teachers who are working with a team of students, training students, whether it's for accelerating or drilling down into a skill that a group of students are just having a hard time understanding. Um, the elementary, they're, you know, well versed in that, and to see that continuing to come up through the secondary level is awesome. Social emotional learning, we have discussed the number of mental health issues, um, that we continue to deal with, with our students here, and we're no different than any other school district as well. But to, um, embrace social emotional learning in the actual curriculum is quite important. And we had the opportunity to have our faculty staff, uh, participate in professional development on that. There were two professional development, um, opportunities for our staff. Um, one, Mrs. Kalovish had, and, uh, it talked about compassion fatigue, which, um, you know, in the teaching profession or education profession, you're always helping, always helping, always helping, not taking it or yourself many times. And there were strategies, not just to utilize with the students, but also, um, as a professional there. We also had, um, call coaching and consulting client, um, who addressed various ways to utilize, um, mindfulness strategies, I should say, um, for students as well as teachers. There's been a lot of work done, and Gino, Gino Joe, I know, has worked very closely with Lindsay Cassel, as well as the elementary principals. So next year, to embracing social emotional learning at the elementary levels, again, integrating into the curriculum. And at the junior high school, like only two months ago, um, Mrs. Cassel presented a course that will be offered at the junior high school in social emotional learning for our students. And there's been discussion at the senior high, how we can embrace some of those areas and needs, um, as well. We talked about different things, such as having a, I don't want to call it a student round, but a time out, a break round, a wellness round, uh, for students to possibly go to, um, and have teachers that are trained to assist those students in those moments, just to take that minute to decompress and get them back into the classroom, but really to think about and reflect on, um, their emotions and how can they work better to handle those and continue to be in the classroom. Um, a lot has, uh, continued on project-based learning lessons, um, on our active days, groups of teachers have worked on those lessons. Next year, we actually have two courses, again, represented to the Board of Education two months ago, where we have a teaming of teachers who will be providing two courses with project-based learning opportunities for students at the senior high school. So again, you see the professional development that had, our teachers have participated in, and now this year, the implementation and utilizing that professional development that followed the year. We always talk about the forty developmental assets, and the key is relationship building with our students. You know, we want our students to be successful, we have rigorous courses, we want them to see relevance in these courses. If teachers do not have the relationships with the students, none of that's going to be possible. We continue to utilize the forty developmental assets and actually have our teachers implementing lessons in relationship building throughout, in, in.
Can you jump in here? Yeah, and before I jump in on those last three bullets, I'll just say, when you look at, at professional learning communities, social emotional learning, project-based learning lessons, these are district initiatives, and, and any one of these is significant in, in the, the cost of implementing, it can be quite expensive. Then you look back at what Dan shows you, and he says the budget's going to increase by one mil. That's because we sit and plan with the principals and the building administrators on the best way to phase these items in. Um, for example, project-based learning, seven to twelve focus over the last couple of years, we'd, we're going to get to that training in the elementary month, but we don't do it, but you can't go K to twelve, you have to figure out the best timeline to do it. So it's about planning out your professional development, not just for nineteen, twenty, but where do you expect to go in twenty, twenty-one? Dr. Tepper talks about professional learning communities, what impact they've had at the junior high school, and she always compliments the elementary school, uh, about how they work in professional learning communities. But our I is part of that same training that they did, uh, eighteen, nineteen, and getting that worked into the elementary. Again, maybe not next year, but having a plan for three, four, or five years down the road and implementing that plan in a physically responsible manner, so that, you know, we did, we can absorb a, a retirement cost, et cetera, that comes from the state. Um, high, high-impact instructional practices was really a, a big focus for the elementary this year, uh, and we're talking about things, instructionally, that teachers do in the classroom that have high impact on student achievement, um, and, and student learning. So what are we talking about there? Uh, we are talking about providing appropriate feedback to students, we're talking about vocabulary strategies, we're talking about cognitive practices, we are talking about using REACH survey data and using actual data from our kids that we, we got through the REACH survey.
Research is the two, one of the developmental assets.
To determine the, the best way to build relationships with our students. Wildcat wisdom is a part of, uh, it's part of the culture in the elementary school, but those things that I just talked to you about are topics that they discuss in their faculty meetings. So we're not talking about fire drill dates anymore, we're trying to have high-impact conversations, uh, around high-impact instructional practices in, in that time that they have with their staff. Friday, we completed the stop lead training. Dr. Jenkins, uh, from Excel Health came up, provided an entire day of professional development to our staff on how to stop, uh, how to stop bleeding. Um, and, and obviously, this is a sign of the times, this is a sign of, of issues, you know, in a mass casualty incident, how could our staff members, our students save lives? Quickly. Um, he came out and did an entire day, it cost us nothing for the training. He brought seven three-hundred-dollar leading kits, uh, leading patrol kits with him to be placed throughout our buildings. Uh, and the thing that we talked about with the staff is, yes, we're talking about that, that major incident, that CNN incident, but at the same time, kids are kids every day. And a kid may be a kid and sustain a, a massive injury, be suffering from blood loss, and that math teacher who steps over to your classroom to see what's going on may be in a life or death situation just from a kid being hit. So I, I, great feedback from that, I was glad to get that done on our entire staff. Anyone that wasn't trained on Friday, we will catch, uh, with another training. And another thing that we were able to do for the first time, I believe, uh, ever, maybe, with the new program that we're instituting, um, uh, last month, you approved the, the purchase of the new K-8 science program, we were actually able to start implementation training this year. Uh, usually, we would do that in the summer or right before the school year started. The, the science, uh, committee, the group that got together, the building principal said, wouldn't it be great to give teachers a jumpstart on that this year? Uh, so working with Hootman and Harcourt, uh, they were able to ship materials to us, uh, so that we could get our staff members trained, we did K-5 training in the morning, and six to eight training in the afternoon. So again, we're, we're not, staff members aren't coming in over the summer, this is not an additional budgetary, uh, impacted item. We did it through the course of the eighteen, nineteen years.
This is a list, we always talk about, when we talk about relationship building, we also talk about climate, culture. Um, some of these, um, bulleted items I've already spoken about, that these, these items are always that we continue to build those relationships and continue to build a positive culture, school climate. Um, one thing I will jump down to again is the social One thing I will jump down to again is the social emotional learning piece, I had mentioned earlier that the junior high school, Mrs. DeCassolo and Mr. Shibitts were planning a trip to go to Burl, it's actually for the social emotional learning component. I had spoken about a different professional development prior to that, but the focus for this is social emotional learning, not the artificial intelligence that we went to from on tour, so I wanted to clarify that. The career pathway manager survey was implemented last year, and again, Anthony Princeton was very, the one who kicked this off at the senior, as well as who stood at the junior high, where the students identify their strengths, their career interests, and they continue to go back to that and update their profile. That's just another way for teachers to have the opportunity to get to know students' interests, friends, et cetera, to build those relationships. We've had Karen Katz at the elementaries for quite some time, and I've had Breakfast of Champions, I always get the joke, it's been here 20 years since I've been here, Mr. Mayes always has to say that in breakfast, thank you, Mr. Mayes. Quite a few motivational assemblies on anti-bullying, about how to overcome obstacles at all grade levels, K-12. And parent presentations, we had quite a few presentations this year, I'm sure you're aware, you've heard that we had three P.A. come in to talk to our parents about baby and the dangers of baby. We also had the Leeformsys from CVS speak about the dangers of opioids, and we also had a safety and security presentation, I know that Mr. Karanka was involved with.
I was able to get to the PTOs and speak to them about things that I'm doing in the district, plus talk to junior high parents that move up tonight, and have frankly, I noticed parent presentations, but had a great conversation with our sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders as a part of the roll-out, I'm safe to say, talking them about trusted adults, people they can go to if they have concerns, it's a good conversation.
We are always, and we'd like to highlight our recognition and rewards, that we are always seeking grant money, always applying for grants, Jessica Goldin helps us a great deal in this process. This year, we received $60,000 towards STEM education, and I know just that the last meeting, we actually had Senator Ward come and present the mobile science and math grant. That $50,000 received from that applicant, that grant application, or grant award, I should say, totally funded our Project Leap Away bio medical course, where we were in need of much equipment as well as training for Mrs. Karanka, who went and implemented that course at our senior high school. And just to say, the sections have increased directly from, drastically from last year was the first year that was implemented. We also received $10,000 toward our STEM education from Robin Dell Energy. I know Mr. Karanka applied in the bridge, we want to talk a little bit about safety and security.
Yeah, there's $45,000 there in two safety and security grants for upgrades to the school district, and I'll highlight the Safe Schools Program grant of $20,000 that was actually written by Mrs. Kalovish, that she used to provide the student assistance program liaison to our district. And even beyond that, and Georgia, I just want to jump to the Partners in Education Foundation, continue to support the district with $177,000 of additional funding. So if we go back a couple of slides to things like the professional learning communities, professional development, social emotional learning, all of those things, look at just those four items in terms of grant money into the district, and you've almost got a mil right there. So we continue to try to find different avenues and different grant programs and monies that are out there to support some of the things that we want, in addition to just trying to find the right timeline to get them implemented, but I didn't even take that.
No, no, no.
I just felt like it's just.
Also, new enrollment opportunities for our students, scholarships for our seniors, grants for individual classroom teachers, so so much of our programming is supported by that. The next bullet, we always, everybody goes to conferences, you go to conferences, they're great, but you're sitting there and you're saying, we do this, we do this, we do this though, we can do this, why aren't we presenting in these conferences? So a personal goal was to have our school district begin to send in proposals to various state conferences, hopefully then national conferences, and this August, our principals at the senior high and junior high school will be presenting the P.A. Educational Leadership Summit. So they will be talking about personalized learning, I know Mr. Mayes is, would have focused with that, junior high professional learning communities in our schedule, and our schedule changes with that. So both proposals were accepted, and we're extremely excited, and we're going to continue submitting proposals for various conferences because we feel that, hey, we need to start telling our story, we really do. Nich Award, you heard from the Nich Award, first number one school district in Westmoreland County, based on various academic programs, rigor, teachers, club activities, et cetera. Our music award, which we had mentioned, and we recognize Tim Sharon, the original serving, who put in for that, and we were recognized with that award. And last, but by all means, not least, the completion and opening of our new Late Grove Elementary School. State of the art, absolutely phenomenal, and we definitely wanted to highlight that and maybe say, save the best for last on that bullet. Any questions? I know that's a lot of information, but we're just trying to present you, you know, the budget, everyone talks about professional development, increase in science program, K-8, increase in professional development, but we feel we want to come back and show you what accomplishment has happened in the team.
Georgia, I just have a question, probably from that, actually, about the teaming in the junior high and the changes and how we teach our kids. I mean, now they're taught in a team of four teachers, but primarily, are we going to get any kind of results on how the students are doing with that system, whether the teachers are like, how it's going? I'm just curious.
We are taking.
I mean, you don't have to do it now, I'm not saying now, obviously, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
We are, we are doing some in-house survey results of what the teachers feel collaboratively, culturally, we've already received a lot of great feedback, we have less failures this year than we've ever had since.
Awesome.
I've been in there, I've been with John and Chad as well, too, and I think the second thing that we're going to look at moving forward is using that essential skill data to actually track with our PSSA scores, are those rising because kids are needing those essential skills? Are we having less kids in remediation and more kids in enrichment as we move forward? So we definitely have plans to put a data mechanism in place to track this.
Those are all the questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Dan, I do have a question. Can you tell me what the idea of budget cycle, the engagement, beginning July, what you believe the comparable budget would be again?
What I've seen, budget to, to actual budget, I think that Jack can operate this year, if tonight they improve the fund balance transfer of $400,000, will be about, we're missing by about a half million dollars, we've overspent by about a half million dollars. What I anticipate.
And I have another question, since we were talking about the new element, the new elementary school. When all the bond managers are done on the school, can you tell me what we will spend on the school itself?
On LES, yeah, it should be about $42 million.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, I do have to say, you don't really appreciate or realize how much this has accomplished until it's written down, and it's amazing. Also, I think we have a feeling, and he's going to talk to us about food service.
Good evening. Every school year, we have to evaluate our school lunch prices based on the paid lunch equity law of the Helping Reindeer Kids Act. The law states if our average school lunch price is less than $3, and we're required to use an online calculator set up by the Department of Education to kind of determine what we do for lunch prices for the next school year. So at Grayly Grove, our average school lunch price is $2.50, which is actually under $3. So I use the paid lunch equity tool to determine what our goal is for next school year. It came out to be a 10 cent increase at both the elementary and secondary level, so if you look at our current lunch prices for the secondary level, they are $2.65, with that 10 cent increase for next school year, it would be $2.75. Our elementary school lunch price is $2.40 currently, and with a 10 cent increase, it will be $2.50 next year. I'm also recommending a 5 cent jump on our breakfast price district-wide for next school year. Our current breakfast price is $1.35, roughly $1.40 for next school year. So if you look it up, the county, the schools in Westmoreland County, you'll see that Grayly Grove is right in on the average with everybody else when it comes to school breakfast and lunch prices.
Thank you, Dylan.
You're welcome.
All right, that being said, I move for adoption of resolution number 239, which is approval of the 2019, 2020 food service meal pricing.
Sir.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption, resolution number 240, approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption, resolution number 241, approve payment bill.
Sir.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption, resolution number 242, to appoint Act 511 tax collectors for 2019, 2020.
Sir.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption, resolution number 243, which is to approve the 2019, 2020 designation of depositors.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption, resolution number 244, which is the authorization to invest funds for 2019, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number 245, excuse me, to reappoint school district treasurer for June 30, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption, resolution number 246, to approve fund balance transfers.
Sir.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion?
Mr. Howser, could you just explain very briefly why we're doing that?
The Grayly Grove School District hereby approves the transfer of $400,000 to a general fund that signed fund balance into a capital reserve fund, to be restricted for capital projects as of May 14, and this is basically the old LES monies.
And is this in response to a concern about work that may have been done at the vote that?
Certainly, makes it accessible for us to gain access to who gets that does materialize as a 2W. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Much of that actually will actually rely on what the other school districts are going to do and participate, and how they're going to participate, am I correct?
Yes.
So, and tell me something, when will the study be done?
I can tell you that, to my knowledge, at the May 22, we heard the CPM meeting, there will be a recommendation to hire a firm to do the feasibility study, which I think is due back in September, and that's the timeline.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption, resolution number 247, which is to approve the GASP number 75 resolution, which is hereby approves all consulting group, and they will perform this service for a fee of $5,900.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption, resolution number 248, which is to approve life insurance.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption, resolution number 249, to approve 2020 real estate tax assessment and fuels program.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption, resolution number 250, which is to approve the 2019, 2020 general fund proposed bottom budget, and I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second, and this will be a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Prentice.
Mrs. Mayes?
Yes.
Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Roberto?
No.
Mr. Palmer, Benson, Dr. Zurg, should we have that? Mrs. Coza?
Yes.
Mr. Liza, Benson, Mr. Magathia?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Pardon me? Also, I would like to announce that we have a finance committee meeting that's held this evening at 5:00 p.m. at the library, our next finance committee meeting Tuesday, June 11, 5:30 p.m. here at the senior high school library. Facilities operation and planning, I move for adoption, resolution number 251, which is to approve, I move an address change at Late Grove Elementary School.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion?
Mrs. Frye, would you please just throw in a second?
Mr. Howser made a perfect comment, this is the actual move of the address within the, they have a window of opportunity, and this is it, so I'll just leave the final address, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption, resolution number 252, which is to approve engagement letter for independent consulting services.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Our next facilities operation and planning committee meeting will be Thursday, June 6, also are minutes from our previous meeting on May 9, are passed, and our meeting will be held at 3:30 p.m. at the Eden Building. Student activities and recreation, Miss May?
Yes, thank you. I move for adoption, resolution number 253, to award gifts to the fall sports equipment and supply.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, second, questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
And the voting committee meeting is in, it's scheduled meeting on April 45, 2019, are attached.
Thank you, Mrs. Prentice.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number two forty-seven, which is to approve the GASP number seventy-five resolution, which is to hereby accrue all consulting group, and they will perform this service for a fee of fifty-nine hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number two fifty, which is to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty general fund proposed bottom budget, and, I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and second. And this will be a roll call vote. Please, Mrs. Prebys.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Roberto?
No.
Mr. Palmer? Dr. George? Mrs. Coza?
Yes.
Mr. Liza? Mr. Magath?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Roberto?
No.
Mr. Palmer? Dr. George? Mrs. Coza?
Yes.
Mr. Liza? Mr. Magath?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Magath?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
Mrs. May? Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Liza?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
okay, and, um, we're also accepting nominations for nominees to the PSBA leadership development conference, uh, May 31st, 2019, and if board members are interested in serving on that.
Thank you, Mrs. May. E W C T C Joint Operating Committee, Mr. May?
Thank you. The E W C T C senior recommendation, recommendation ceremony will be Thursday, May 4th, and, uh, it's 7:00 o'clock. At the Grayly Trove Senior High School, uh, E W C T C Joint Operating Committee is attached to the floor's agenda. And next, the E W C T C Joint Operating Committee meeting will be on Wednesday, May 22nd. And that's at 7:00 at the E W C T C.
Thank you. Technology, Mrs. Cozam?
Yes, I'm moving the adoption resolution number 254 to approve the Academy Consortium of Membership Services Agreement.
Second.
Put a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion?
Yes, can you explain this resolution and make good?
I'll turn the report to my. Sure, this is a consortium with the intermediate unit that we have as part of, uh, E Academy. It's a, a side of our school that we can offer our own students. And so to be part of the, to group, to be able to provide those for our students, we, uh, have a membership fee with them.
Thank you. Any other questions on, on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
I'm moving for the adoption of resolution number 255 to approve the renewal of memorandum of understanding with C C L Technologies.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion?
Yeah, I, I do have a question. Uh, this is part of what has been outsourced for a number of years, am I correct? In, in technology, uh, the amount where the cost per year that we are outsourcing is, is the red around on a $230,000?
For this particular contract?
Yes, $211.
Not for 255. For 255, this one is our PINs and our e-school information one.
That's $31,000?
Yes.
Okay, no, I, I just, just want to go back. I, I know that, uh, a few months ago, we did hire a secretary. And one of the reasons that we hired her because she had, uh, PINs experience. And I know I brought this up last year and, uh, and everyone disagreed with me. And at that time, it was a three-year contract and this year is a five-year contract. I, I would like to see a student in house.
I, I don't know that we have, um, the current staff that would be able to do what we do with a PINs and our e-school information support. That's a pretty monument of a task that they do. There's a lot of state reporting, there's funding that's tied to it. I don't think there's anybody that has a position that would have the availability of their, their daily activities to do this.
Mr. Pines, would it be fair to say that we probably take more than one person to do both e-schools and PINs?
Definitely.
And at one time, we used to do that, am I correct?
We did.
In house, so.
And, and we had about a, do you want to correct me if I'm wrong? I, I have about 50 bucks, a $60,000 year savings for the positions that we were able to replace for that PINs and e-school support.
Uh, yeah, actually I have a larger amount than that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I have, but we're saving, uh, over $200,000 a year over seven-year periods, equated to about $1.6 million.
Well, what I'm asking for is the people that we have, uh, in place to, to do the work. But you're telling me that, that apparently it was.
I understand the volume of the information that gets submitted and collected and, um, analyzed for the PIN submission. And it grows every year. It's very, um, tedious and meticulous. And there's a lot of funding tied to it. There's nobody, uh, that we currently have that we could, we could push this on to, on top of things they're already doing.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. And that motion passes.
Uh, I move for the adoption of resolution number 256 to approve renewal of memorandum of understanding with C C L Technologies contracts for onsite support staff and technology staff.
Put a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion?
And what is the cost of this resolution?
Uh, this one.
$2,000?
No, this one for next year will be $211,020.
And again, this is a part of the adoption process.
Yes. There were, there were positions that we were able to replace. And again, I don't know if you have a number on the savings from the big contract. Sorry, I just wanted to know.
That's what I referenced last time.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
What was the total amount of our old years?
About one, 1.6 million dollars.
In savings.
In savings, yes. You know, obviously, uh, you know, when you have that many staff, we would have to hire to take that responsibility with the benefits, with the retirement, um, it's, yeah, it's significant savings by having to work through.
Any other questions on the motion?
You're saying the savings is 1.?
Yeah, 1.6. It's about 200, I can tell you, 2012, we saved $235,000. In 1213, we saved $227,000. Same 13, 14, 15, 16 was 273. And in 15, 16 was 300. And 16, 17 was 293. And in 17, 18 was 282. So that totals, and my apologies, because I can't see while my glasses, it's actually 1,841,000 dollars over that period. And what I will tell you, I did not add in increased cost for pre-pursuit.
And based on how many employees?
That, I don't know if I have that, who, I might have that.
I, I have five full-time positions, um, two secretaries, instructional technology specialist is what I have.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, so, so when, when we get away with, uh, with filling in in house, there were seven people that were terminated?
Yeah. No, they were terminated. Um, some of them were put back into the classroom.
Some of them were teachers, we're kind of filling in, um, technology support hole that we moved back into the classroom.
Okay.
And some worked in a data center.
We're talking back in 1112, many years ago.
I, I understand, I just wonder how you come up with $1.6 million?
Oh, I know, it's, it's, it's significant. I'll have you share the numbers with me, they are on, I'd rather hear it.
Any other questions on the motion?
By the way, that goes back to the name of the control, those costs, non-feasors related. Some of those things we put in place when we were cutting $200,000 and taking federal funding, um, they weren't just one-time savings, they were recurring for year, year after year after year. So I think it's important we don't lose sight of that. You know, even when we negotiated the last transportation contract, you know, that was savings, significant savings in year one. Freezing year two, but that, you add that over a seven-year period, that number becomes a big, big number. So, well, that was one that's definitely paid its back.
Just so you understand where I'm coming from, uh, we're talking about, you know, a budget that actually has a, you know, which increase. I'm going to look at every, every line I have in the city that we can actually cut, make a cut so that we don't have to raise taxes. And that's where I'm coming from, and, and you can argue that in fact, but, uh.
Oh, I'm not, you, you, that's your job. You need to ask those questions and we need to provide you with feedback. But I think what I'm trying to share right now is to go back from outsourcing that technology and hiring staff internally, that's going to be additional cost. That's going to take your one mil increase higher. It's not going to go the other way. So that's the only thing that I would be cautious.
So basically, you're telling me with the staff that we have, you could not give anybody any extra work?
I'm not saying that. I think if you, I don't want to speak for Dr. Pines, but she feels nobody's qualified within our, uh, district to handle that level of responsibility. Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. And that motion passes.
I move for adoption of resolution number 257 to approve the Unified Communications Maintenance Contract with C C L Technologies for the Unified Communications, Communications Board.
Second.
Put a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
And the next technology, no, that's, the technology meeting minutes were from April 16th, and attached. And that condition.
Thank you, Mrs. Cozam. Superintendent's recommendation, Mrs. Frye?
I'd ask the board to move a resolution number 258, which is the creation of a payroll manager position.
So move. Second.
Put a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move a resolution number 259, which is the approval of the reservations listed.
Second.
Make a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
And I'd ask the board to move a resolution number 260, which is the approval of two additional substitute teachers for the last two weeks of school. Hooray.
So move. Second.
Put a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 261, which is the approval of professional personnel. And I will read the names of the positions. Um, Terry Johnson for arts education at bachelor's step two at a total of $46,700. She's certified in arts pre-K for 12. Jordan Jury, who is physical education bachelor's step one, which is salary of $45,707. Health and P E certification pre-K for 12. Elizabeth Thompson for elementary general music band, step two, masters plus 30, at a salary of $49,707. She's certified music P K, pre-K for 12. For elementary general music choral, Brooke Sichaki, and if I said it wrong, you can correct me later. Um, she is step one, bachelor's at $45,707. She's also certified music pre-K for 12. And Ashley Lopinski, uh, special education, step one, masters, $47,707. She is certified in elementary K to six, special ed, pre-K for 12, early childhood, English seven through 12, reading specialist, pre-K through 12. Thank you.
So move. Second.
Put a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
And as we continue our hiring for next year with our retirements next month, we will invite these candidates, these, uh, teachers of Grayly Trove to come here to meet the board with the other new candidates. I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 262, which is the appointment of support personnel, including our student summer workers.
So move.
Put a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 263, which is the approval of support personnel supplemental. Um, Ms. Ramirez and Dr. Tepper is cheerleading in reviews and these are our candidates.
So move.
Put a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Will it be all eyes?
Yes, yes.
There was some confusion.
Merle's exhausted, I have to play. Merle's exhausted from sixth grade camp, but the thing he went up for is.
Second.
So we're.
Aye. We're in favor. And that motion passes.
Thank you. I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 264, which is the approval of summer athletic department interns, which there are three.
So move.
Put a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye!
Thank you.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 265, which is the employee, the approval of employee benefit and pay plans effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021.
So move.
Put a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion?
As this document in your eyes will be looked at, girl.
It's already been discussed.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 266, which is the approval of the employee benefit and pay plan for the payroll manager position.
So move.
Put a motion on the floor in second. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Um, as you notice, under other business, there are quite a few things going on in the school district in the next few weeks. Uh, please look at them. Um, you certainly attend many of the, um, items I will note. Um, the seniors' elementary school walk, this is year three. Um, our students, our seniors go to their elementary school, which they attended, and go through with their captain bounds on it. It's really a very nice experience if you want to come and watch. It really, um, um, makes you feel good. Um, Bachelorette this year is at Lake Trove United Methodist Church on Wednesday, May 29th. Again, it's a wonderful opportunity for our senior class and cameras and everyone else to get together to celebrate, um, them as a class. And obviously then we have commencement, uh, rain, um, holding off. We will be having it Thursday, May 30th, at Rossi Field. If it, uh, has to be postponed, it will be scheduled for Friday, May 31st. Please see Mrs. Borowski for tickets that evening if you're planning to attend, if you all can. Um, please just see her before you leave this evening. Uh, one of the other reasons, Merle has been at sixth grade camp. This is his, um, his second day. He has, uh, three, six, seven more to go. So, uh, we appreciate your being here this evening, but we also appreciate all the time that you've spent at sixth grade camp. I know that it is something you enjoy doing, but it really is something that we appreciate you're willing to do. Um, also at your seats tonight is the WIU board election sheet. Um, they must have left somebody off that today.
They did.
Um, so if you didn't already fill it out, if you wouldn't mind filling it out and giving it back to Mrs. Borowski. Has everybody got a copy of this on their seat?
Of course.
It looks like this. Um, and nobody can figure out why they do it this way. I know we always say that, but if you wouldn't mind filling that out before you even turn that in to Mrs. Borowski. Um, I appreciate, um, the attendance tonight. Um, we know that we cancel our meeting next Tuesday because of the election day. Um, so thank you for your patience this evening. Our meetings in June are Tuesday, June 11th and Tuesday, June 18th, um, here at the center. Um, thank you very much.
And let's encourage everyone to go vote on Tuesday.
Yes, yes. Everyone to go vote on next Tuesday.
Thank you, Mrs. Marry.
Thank you.
At this time, let's open the floor for hearing of visitors, part two. This is where anyone can scan off the podium, state your name and address, and speak of any, any concerns they have with the district. Say no one, I move for adoption of resolution number 267, be determined. Motion on the floor in second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.